Call the meeting order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Chung? Here. Councilmember Power? Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protim Pogecourt?
Yes.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Power is out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can all stand for our invocation and our pledge. Bishop Paul Eisenzimmer will give our invocation tonight from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints.
Our dear, kind and gracious heavenly Father, we gather tonight as a council and ask that Thy Spirit be here with us, that we may be able to discuss and support those that are appointed to be on the City Council. And may be able to discuss friendly and peacefully the things of our great town of Tehachapi and this city and all that it does. We ask that Thou would bless the families here and bless our town with continued love and peace for each other. And we are grateful for the opportunity which we have to live in a country that gives us such freedoms. And we are grateful for Thee and for Thy Son. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Councilmember Smith, please.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the lie of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All items listed within asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contributional by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask question. If comment or discussion desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in a listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have anybody from the audience would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Our council?
Motion approved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Audience oral written communications. The City Council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Respectively, you request that the public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of the city business to be discussed, and the organization or person's representative, if any. To ensure accuracy of the minutes, please fill out a speaker's card at the podium. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made in the same item, same time the item is called for discussion by the mayor. Questions on the non-agenda items will be directed by the council or the staff should be submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than 12:00 PM on Monday preceding the council meeting. Otherwise, response to the question may be carried over to the next city council meeting. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda, except in certain specified circumstances, the council reserves a right to limit the speaking time of individuals and the time allotted for public presentations. Do we have anybody in the audience for a public comment? Okay, I see none. City clerk reports.
Actually, we're onto police chief reports.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Always a pleasure to come up here and talk about the Police Department and kind of where we're at with staffing. So with that being said, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Officer Ryan Hulse. We hired Ryan a couple of months ago and with some different scheduling conflicts and things like that, we weren't able to get him into a council meeting earlier, but we have him here tonight to do the formal swearing in. Ryan comes to us from California City. He's a Tehachapi resident. He has over 12 years of experience as a police officer. He brings a wealth of knowledge to our department, a lot of local stability, which I think is fantastic. And he's also a Marine Corps veteran. So I'd like to bring up Officer Ryan Hulse, and let's get him to.
You just raise your right hand and then I'm just gonna read the statement and you just say, "I do." "I, Ryan Hulse, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I hold bare true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So to do Ryan's badge is a former colleague of mine and a good friend, Jesse Hightower. Chief Jesse Hightower.
Hey, you're welcome. Let's see how bad I can make this hurt.
Real quick, Ryan, do you have any other family members you want to introduce or anybody that was here tonight?
It's my girlfriend, Ashley.
Well, come on up and say hi.
Get stuck in the front row? Can't be if you're by myself.
I can show the cat corner here. Perfect. Everybody scooch a little bit more. Okay. Here, three, two, one.
There you go. Got what you need?
Yep.
Okay, wanna invite the team in?
Yes. All right. Everybody ready? Three, two, one.
Good job.
Got it? Good. Thank you. Okay, item nine, mayor's present proclamation by celebrating Edwards Air Force Base and Space Force anniversaries.
Good evening, council and mayor. So today I'm bringing to your attention the Edwards Air Force Base will be celebrating a couple of anniversaries coming up. So the Air Force is reaching its 77th year and the Space Force will be marking its fifth anniversary. So to honor these milestones, Edwards Air Force Base will be holding a ball at Club Murdock on October 19th. But really, this is a moment to just appreciate and recognize the impacts that Edwards Air Force Base has on our community here in Tehachapi. Not only do they have key institutions like the Air Force Test Center, the Air Force Test Pilot School, NASA's Armstrong Flight Research Center, and the Flight Test Museum. They are a huge impact on our local economy here and a great resource for our young individuals looking to pursue further careers either in the military or aerospace industry. So at this time, I don't know if we have any members from Edwards Air Force Base representing? If not, then we will just, we've got their certificate for them that we will get to them when the time is right.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, item 10.
All right. We are also taking a moment to recognize WM. So as we know, WM is a huge cornerstone in our community, not only for our waste management, but they are a huge supporter of all of our community events, not just city-run events, but through the Chamber of Commerce and various other local organizations. They do so much to help these events get off the ground and provide these vital services. So we just wanted to take a moment to appreciate all the work that they do and all of the in-kind sponsorships that they provide for these events. So I'd like to invite Ashley from WM to give a quick.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm not here to truck trash today for once. But I am here to really honestly thank the city of Tehachapi and the council for always being such great partners. It is a complete honor and privilege to not only service this community, but be a community partner and be so involved. And I just want you to know, you know, we take that very seriously. We love being a part of this community. And so being able to give back in any way we can is very vital to us. And I thank my team who's here with me tonight. I have my district manager Brenda. Thank you. She's the one that approves all our requests to do all these great things in the community. So I give a big shout out to her. And then, of course, Frank Vasquez, who's always at all the community events. Between him and I, we're here all the time just making sure we're present to our residents and our community. And that just goes to show how much you guys mean to us. So thank you so much for this recognition, and we look forward to all the great things the city has to come.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you Frank and Brenda for being here tonight and for everything that you do for our community. It's wonderful. You guys are always, never refuse anything that we ask of you, and you guys are always willing to help, and it's always a great team effort by your group. So I appreciate you being here. We're gonna present a certificate to you.
Dana, come over here, Brenda.
So we have a certificate of recognition. Tehachapi City Council presents to WM, the local waste management team consistently goes above and beyond the enhancing community events organized by the city of Tehachapi and various local organizations. Your dedication has been instrumental in the success of events such as Hometown Christmas, Fourth of July Festival, Green Street Get Down, Farmer's Market. Your in-kind sponsorships have significantly contributed to the safety, enjoyment, and overall success of countless community events. Your efforts have enriched our community in measurable ways, and we extend our deepest gratitude.
Thank you.
So we'll take the pictures.
Take pictures.
Couple more, three, two, one.
I didn't blink.
You're right.
Mr. Garrett would like to have a few words at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Davies. I just want to express my gratitude to WM also and the team here. Brenda, amazing leader locally, safe drivers, things are going well. Chief and I just talked about that a second ago. It's just you guys do amazing things for us with the, you know, we talk about restrooms and picking up trash, but sincerely being a part of our, of our city and our community. When we made the transition from Ben's Sanitation to WM, that was a big deal for the city. Ben's was a true part of ours for 20 plus years, more than 40 years. But WM has filled those shoes and filled those nicely, so we thank you for that. We helped Mr. Costello guide him through, you know, SB 1383, which is the organics portion of what's going on, and more to come. And you guys are truly a part of our, so thank you for doing what you do. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Development Service Director reports. Jay?
Good evening, mayor, council members. The item I have for you tonight is, I'm proud to finally present, I know we've been using it for a while, the Valley Boulevard Recreational Park Project. So as you all will recall, we have entered into a contract with James E. Thompson or JTS Construction for the construction of the Valley Boulevard Recreational Park Project. We've completed our walkthrough and determined that the contract items are complete and looking to issue a notice of completion tonight. Before I give you my recommendation, just I wanna briefly thank my staff. This is one of those projects, we do a lot of work, but these are the ones that the community naturally really appreciates. And we were recently, a couple of weeks ago, honored by the American Society of Civil Engineers for the Southern San Joaquin Valley and received an excellence award for this project, which to you guys may not be as amazing it is to us. A S C E represents over 100,000 civil engineers in the United States and is the largest civil engineering society, a pretty large mover and shaker in the industry. And so for them to recognize this is high-quality work from an engineering perspective and for our community meant a lot to my staff and to me. And so I just wanna take that moment to give them a shout out. I therefore recommend, and my computer shut off, approve the notice of completion for the Valley Boulevard Recreational Park Project and direct the staff to record that document. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any comments from the public to Mr. Slosser?
It's a great park.
Hannah, do you have anything?
No, I just very happily make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second. But congratulations on the award, if you'd relay that.
Yeah, I will. Andrew in particular, this was, a lot of what you see there was his idea too. The five-side park was his, his idea in particular. We needed to figure out what to do with that space. So he has been, he's poured 1,000 hours, 2,000 hours of time into that project. So it's a big deal for him anyway. So I appreciate that. I will pass that on.
If you recall, Mr. Smith, we purchased that property years ago with the intent of building a park. And Jay and his team figured out a way to use somebody else's money?
Yes.
And get the park built, and it's truly spectacular. The neighborhood uses it more than we thought.
That's good to know.
And they respect it, and they use it every day. And, you know, when you leave here tonight, you know, take a, take a drive that way and just look.
Yeah.
You're gonna see 20, 30, 40 people there. It just warms my heart, truly, that so many people in that neighborhood are utilizing this facility. So kudos to Jay, Andrew, the entire team. It's just, it's going so well, and it's just another veteran in our gap for the high quality of life that we expect and continue to strive for.
I think really small pocket parks are great because the neighborhood can just walk over instead of getting the kids in the car, having to dry, load up, and all your equipment.
And that's precisely what you see. I've gone a couple of times midday just to check on one thing or another. And I, you know, I think I remember I was out there, a young girl, maybe six, at her Barbies with her or whatever doll they play with nowadays, and she's running from one of the apartments, like over to slide the doll down the park. And I just thought this is precisely the target audience of what we were looking for is, is a place where parents are comfortable, just, that's their front yard. Perfect.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I go by that two or three times a day, and there's always somebody there.
Yeah.
It's just, and at night, it's just lit up so beautifully with the lights, the sidewalk lights. And I go up the bollards that are lit up.
Yeah.
It's just beautiful. It's been a kind of a proud thing for me to be part of that.
Yeah.
And with everyone, everybody's done, your team, Jay, and the city, the staff. So it really comes out well. We've had a motion, we have had a second. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor Davies. I'd like to ask Mr. Budge to come to the podium to talk about some past, present, and future activities, festivities, and things that are coming up. We have so many things going on in our city, not just festivals, but great meetings and gatherings of people so we can share information. But Mr. Budge, if you could share that with us tonight, it'd be great.
I think most recently, and maybe Chief Standridge can expand. Last Thursday, we had the bike rodeo, a partnership with TVRPD, and I was asking Chief how well it went, and Chief?
I thought it was a great event, Mayor. Thank you for attending. And so you guys know Mayor Davies is very skilled. He did the bicycle course twice on his scooter. He's really good. Challenged me. I had to get out there and do it, and I cut through. But, you know, hey, Chief's gotta be point A to point B guy. I can't be going in circles. But it was great, you know. We, we had a lot of parents that come out talking to us about how to get their kids to wear bicycle helmets. And, and after, you know, seeing a couple of us wearing helmets, they, they put them on. And Officer Comby and Officer Laverne were skateboarding. They're both old skateboarders from the Tehachapi Skate Parks that they got out there and were trying to show their skills. And I was just thinking, God, we'd have to work. And, but, you know, we gave out 40 bicycle helmets, which we only had a two-hour event. And so that tells you the kind of participation. And in talking with the TVRPD, we're actually thinking about what can we do next year to hit a whole different groove and how can we make it better and better. So I was really excited about it.
And you can further expand with the bicycle helmets, the collaboration within the city and other organizations. So I get a chance to work with Jay and his team. They submit for a $2,000 grant from KernCOC, Kern Council Governments, so for bike safety. So they send us $2,000. We then reach out to our local bike shop. Marvin Amato's reopened his Cycle and Go shop, so we send that money back into the community. He purchases the helmets for us, and then we get them to the Police Department. So a lot of us talking together, figuring out what's available, but it's, I think we've got great communication here within the city. And then I think our community is what pays the, to get the good results at the end. This Thursday, picked the ball with the police. We did, held two events last year, and Public Works worked their tail off building temporary courts out in the parking lot. Spent hours and hours putting those things together. We had 150 people show up between the two days we did it. Now that we have the courts that are permanently set up, we're gonna have our first event this year, this Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00, and it should be a ton of fun. And of course, it's Apple Festival weekend, so Friday through Sunday, the Fall Carnival will be taking place out at the Event Center and Rodeo Grounds. Saturday and Sunday is the Apple Festival, and it has a new footprint this year. It'll be on Green Street, it'll be on F Street, Robinson, and then come on the north side of City Hall, the parking lot. So it'll kind of be a circular event this year, and we expect a lot of people to come out. And Claire's worked very hard. I think she's still working on it. So it's, a lot of, a lot of hours have gone into for the prep for this weekend. Saturday night, we'll have a stargazing event at the airport, Aviator Park, starting at 5:30. We've got some NASA ambassadors, some local retired teachers that are part of the NASA Ambassador Program. And the Bear Valley Astronomy Club will be bringing out telescopes for the kids. That starts at 5:30, and it's supposed to be a great night to see the moon in different phases. So it should be a fun night for those to look into stars. Saturday night is the rodeo, and TMRA will be hosting a rodeo. And next Thursday on the 17th, it's Coffee with the Mayor, as we do the third Thursday every month, 7:30. And that's, that's the next, next couple of weeks' work items.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Key. A couple things. So we're wrapping up the paving for this summer, not completely, but we've talked about it several times. You know, downtown, finished it up. We have Robinson, Cherry, Mulberry, different places. About $2.7 million of asphalt this summer, uh, several weeks, actually. So we wanna thank again contractors, Jay, Dawn, Andrew, and their teams for putting that together well and combining funding sources, right? Again, SB, SB 1, gas tax money, Measure S, those sorts of things. Next year, this time next year, just a little sneak peek, we have it in our budget, as you're aware, but over about $2.5 million in Measure S money for next year. In addition to that, some RSTP money and SB 1 money, using some acronyms. But we continue to roll and maintain our infrastructure. We have public safety we're focusing on, being fully staffed, and then paving, but just to give you a snapshot. So next summer, we plan on repaving every street on the north side of tracks.
Yes.
H, I, J, and using those grindings to also redo the alleys. So that's the plan. In addition to that, Valley Boulevard, from, let's say, Mountain View to Tucker, that's gonna be completely redone. And then Curry Street from Seate, right out here, up to Valley, and then Valley from Curry out to just a little bit past Clearview area. So that will be done. In addition to that, two areas on Dennison. So later this month, contractors continue to work on Dennison, and that's really concrete work. Curved gutter, sidewalks, you know, those sorts of things, some concrete, some paving, filling in some, some gaps. But we have utilities that are still being worked on out there, undergrounding, and then we have some storm, storm drain improvements that are being done. So we will repave Dennison in two areas. One from the intersection of Tehachapi Boulevard, including the intersection. Jay's team was just able to grab about $150,000 more so we can include the intersection of Tehachapi Boulevard and Dennison. So that's new. But Dennison going south to Valley, and really, I'm sorry, past Valley, to Georgia Street. So that'll be completely brand-new asphalt this next summer. And then Dennison Road by WM, actually. So thank you for the improvements that WM has made to the facilities there. Painting and parking lot and landscaping. But we'll be redoing Dennison from about, what is it, Allen Michael Brett, Brett Street, going north to the overpass. So in front of WM and the Tehachapi Bend Center Rodeo Grounds, which is in Dyarney. So that will be repaved also. So snapshot of what's on in the queue, since we're talking, we've been talking about asphalt a lot lately and concrete a lot lately. So thank you for the time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I had to run over to the post office today, and I drove around there. And at first, I didn't think I was in ability at the post office, but they, they made us a, they had a way.
There's a detour.
Yeah, my wife was driving, so I had to be careful what I said. But we got there, but it's, it looks amazing what they've done so far, so it's, looks good. That really needed something, some repair work over there.
And Capitol Hills area, we're actually doing a chip seal, slurry seal. So it's a very thick, it's like a quarter inch thick. So we repaired all of the failed asphalt and concrete in that area. And now they are putting down the slurry seal, and the detours look just fine. I was out there twice today. It's a little slow go. You gotta kind of maneuver through, but it's, it's important to drive slow and safely. So we thank everybody for that. So that's gonna be brand-new, and then we'll be striping here once that's done, next week or two. So it's gonna work really, really nice. And it's preserving the asphalt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment and thank the chief for the bicycle rodeo. He shared a story with me before we started tonight. That was cool. I'm one of those guys, when I first got my scooter, I wasn't wearing my helmet, and then I got chastised by a few friends of mine that saw me, and so I wear my helmet every day. So it's incredible that he shared this story about a young man, so I don't wanna wear a helmet. So that was cool that he shared that, and he got him to want to get a helmet. So thank you, chief, for that.
We can thank CHP for the stickers he can put on it.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. I didn't get, yeah, I did. No, I got a sticker. No, thank you.
Put that too, but.
All right, council member reports. Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Just kudos on the street paving, especially Arabian Estates. We've been pulling for that area for the longest time. You know, you can raise the issue, but if we don't have the money, it just kind of, some of the areas have just had to wait, just like we waited with KernCOC money on certain highway things. But this was, thank you to the residents, Measure S, we couldn't have done this.
No, and that's, the Arabian Estates neighborhood was the biggest transformation ever. And thanks to Dawn, I mean, he, him and his crew, they worked out there, they filled puddles, they did some work in the drainage area, because we don't wanna, you know, put in new asphalt and have it deteriorate quickly, right? So there was a lot of, there has been a lot of work that has been done. So there was a lot of, there has been a lot of work that has been done, planned on this summer, and then capped it off with new paving. But I went out there today. And if you haven't driven Arabian Estates since we paved, please go and look.
Yeah, I was out there.
It is spectacular.
I was surprised they were able to use the existing pavement because it's in such bad shape. Street sweeper. Street sweeper. Sweeper couldn't really do anything out there because it would pull up front.
Well, the base is the key, right? You got to have the base. And the base was good.
It was sound enough though for, for an overlay of whatever they used. So.
It's great.
So thank you for that. Last Kern Cog meeting, I talked to our rep for District Nine, talked to her about the, what Jay and I have talked about and his staff about the, having them maybe have their engineering department locate here. We have so much work in this area. And District Nine is about three hours to the north. We're sort of, I feel like sometimes a stepchild of District Nine out of Bishop. And the other District Six is out of Fresno, and they, their boundary is right around Caliente. So we're like the tale of two districts. So we're always constantly asking for their support. And through Jay and his department, I appreciate all the communication with District Six and Nine. But she had elevated that, I think, to the, to the hierarchy in District Nine, to the, communicated my request, which has already been out there. And Jay's already been talking. And we've already had discussions about this.
That's been great. You, Jay, myself, and others. So specifically, what we're talking about here is the existing Caltrans Maintenance Station on Tehachapi Boulevard. As you know, they've designed the building and they'll be cutting revenue here next summer, hopefully, on their new station, maintenance station behind Tractor Supply. That leaves the existing one on the Boulevard empty somewhat, right? Concept is, because we have this large project, the climbing lane, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-six million dollars next in 2025, those Caltrans engineers should be here. They should be in Tehachapi. They should not be engineering it remotely out of Bishop. So Phil, Jay, and others, and I or others, we're pushing Caltrans to remodel that station into an engineering office for the next, whoever, however long. I hope they're here forever, quite frankly.
It'd be great.
Specifically for this climbing lane project. So wish us luck. We continue to work on it and continue to keep it on the forefront of their agendas.
So that's what I got. Thank you, thank you. Hannah, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I would like to commend the police department for their state operation. And I, I truly believe that, that is very exemplary, the collaboration of the, you know, all different agencies in Kern County for the safety, for the community. And thank you. And I think I read that you have like seven arrests. So that was wonderful. And like we have mentioned, Jay's department getting an award. And there is another project that they have received an award for, which was two thousand twenty-three Local Grind and Overlay Award. And I would like to congratulate his department and his staff. And you know, I'm always very appreciative of amazing and wonderful job of city staff. And not to forget, for Hamad's department, for Finance Department, received Excellence in Financial Reporting Awards. And I, I believe that this is the sixth one. This award is from the Government Finance Officers Association, and this is very prestigious award. And, and I do know I can personally attest to what kind of effort that it requires for, for the department to be able to receive this. So thank you, you know, for doing a great job and commend to, to your staff. That's all.
Thank you, Hannah. Joan?
Just paving, paving, paving. And I think, even though our weather is unusually warm right now, this is not normal for us. I think it probably helped with the paving. And then I noticed on Cherry Lane, I count them as I go down Cherry Lane, but there's like five drainage caps and all the drainage caps and all the streets that I have seen paved are all redone. They look great. They look great. So yeah, we appreciate everybody's help and cooperation because they, you know, we detour and we wiggle, wiggle around the streets, but it's, it's doable. So yes, thank you, Jay and company. Here we go. Thank you.
Great. Just a couple of things I'd like to comment on. The car show was a fabulous event. Had such a blast. Probably one of the hardest things I've had to do is pick a mayor's car. I think I walked the car show five times to pick my car. And so I still wasn't satisfied, but it was a great event, just a lot of, big turnout. It was so, just a good event for everybody. So it helped out Claire and everybody. Good job. So, and I know there's a lot of sponsors of that, but I know the city is that. Thank you. So no, it was a great event. Other than that, just thank you, everybody, for everybody's, I love living in town. Everybody put pitches in, just a prime example of waste management and everybody else, all the other members of our community and businesses that are always willing to participate. Thank you, Mr. Garrett and Chief, for everything that you do for the city as well. With that being said, we'll go ahead and close the meeting and we will not have a, you have something, young man?
So I am from, but I'm from two-three, and I have a question for you, Michael Davis. What, what can youths do to help their community?
Say again?
What can youths help, do to help in their community?
What we do is, we have Mr. Slosser here, and we have some other community events that we do. We do like to pick up trash a lot. And so you could get up after the meeting here if you want to get with Mr. Jay. Slosser, he can maybe give you guys some pointers and maybe we can work out something with you guys. Always willing to have the Boy Scouts help out. And I appreciate you coming up, up to the podium, young man. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. What was your name?
Jude.
Jude?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
All right. All right. With that being said, we'll close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.